There we are. So the minutes from July 26th, we've had them. We've had a chance to review. I understand there's one recommended change in language about, even though we actually made a motion, last meeting to go into executive session, it's more properly phrased, a motion to enter into confidential.
Attorney-client session.
Attorney-client session. So, Marie, apparently you want to make a motion to change the minutes to reflect that.
Right.
And then there was also, Andy, you sent an email earlier today about...
Yeah, just some of the wording on the setback. It was worded that, in a way that said, attached garage are required to have a setback of 30 feet from any property line and that it's not actually...
It's not any.
It's not any property line. It was decided...
So your suggested change is what?
Um, I still want to look at the video to see exactly what I said so that we make sure it matches.
So do you, would you like us to table the review of these minutes until you've had a chance to do that? It's fine.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So I'm going to make a motion to table the review of the minutes until the next meeting.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So tonight's agenda, let's go to the tabled applications. And I had the agenda here somewhere, but, oh, I know where I had it, on my computer. Isn't that something?
Amazing, yeah.
So, we just tabled the approval of the minutes till next meeting.
Oh, okay.
To allow Andy time to further review the statutes.
This thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So the first table is, Marie's...
Yep. Based on the recommendation from the planning board and at the request of the applicant, we, I'm going to make a motion to continue tabling this item.
Second.
And before I call for a vote on that, Andy, can you, can you kind of give us a little bit more detail about, honestly, we heard this three months ago, four months ago now, maybe? I forget what it was. And it's, so, do you mind just giving us some update on where the project is?
Based on what Zach, the nursing home, told me from the planning department.
Right.
There's a possibility they may be withdrawing.
Wow.
So they're still kind of trying to work things out. I don't know all the specifics of it, but there's, it sounds like they may be pulling the application.
Okay. You think permanently or you don't know?
Yeah, I don't know.
And do you know what the issues are that would cause them to contemplate to do that? If you don't, you don't.
I don't.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion to table for the same reasons we've been tabling, and that is to allow the planning board to continue their review, or its review, I should say. And we have a second. Marie made the motion, Joe seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number two is Verizon, right? Anybody here from Verizon?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Why don't you come on up? You can have a seat.
All right. Didn't know if I could.
Oh, well, very polite. Raised well. So, okay, do you mind introducing yourself and...
Luke Fletcher with Cellular Sales, Verizon agent.
Okay. And I don't know if you were able to, or what you know about our last hearing on this or meeting?
All of it.
Okay, okay, good. So why don't you let us know where...
I should have been here last time. I live really far away in Malone and had a separate engagement. I should have been here and I'm here right now.
Oh, no, that's, that's okay. You're here tonight. So why don't you let us know where you are now in terms of the application?
Sure. So, just went out and visited the site and after speaking with everybody about last meeting and our signage company did not do their due diligence on your code, which I found out pretty quickly. And so now that we did, you know, actually went through that process and looked at what we needed for this site, we started looking at what we felt we needed to drive traffic to the store versus what we would normally like, you know, in a building. And so we dropped the third sign based on the recommendation of this board, the sign facing Taco Bell's, the sign to the south.
And honestly, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that would have been real tough to see anyway.
It is.
With the trees and Taco Bell.
Yeah. I had not been to the site since I found it because we operate like 43 stores in Upstate, so I hadn't physically been here and I did not realize Taco, but like I'm looking at site plans, but I can't see the other buildings. And so looking for the sign to the north that would drive, you know, pull traffic from the Webster side, and then the front sign is what we're looking for. A lot of other locations, Speedway, Taco Bell, Midas, Chili's, up and down, have that pylon. And so whereas we might have the benefit down the road of a panel in the new sign, a smaller panel, we're not going for, looking for a bigger pylon sign like we normally would do. In lieu of the fact that I believe that a building sign on the front would grab the traffic, you know, coming from the south, to your point, and I believe the sign on the north side would grab the traffic coming from Webster. And so we're looking at, you know, attempting to have approval for two signs at 98.9 square feet based on the size. One of the restrictions that I have with Verizon that we have to work with is both signs, if I have seven signs on a building or two, they have to be the same size. Verizon, like in any site you see in the country, they don't allow one sign to be one size and a secondary sign to be a different size. It's just a decision they made about two years ago. And so that was the request. You know, we have a different traffic pattern with our type of business than most. It's not a, you know, people generally don't go online and find us. They're driving down the road. They see us as a neighborhood store over time. We're competing with a corporate store that's been there for years down in Webster and Verizon felt that there was enough need in the community to have a secondary store as it continues to expand. And so we want to make sure that people can, can find us and see us. We don't really have the advantage of, you know, like a corner or anything, so just trying to, trying to grab traffic and help people to understand where we're at. So that's the basic, what we're looking for. Any questions you have, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. And the question that I would have on the total size is how does, 98 total for two? Is that what you're saying?
Not 98 each is what we're looking for. That's what is submitted in this packet.
So 200, give or take a few.
Correct.
How does that compare to what's allowed based on the footage? I just want to make sure I have the approximate numbers for the request.
They would be allowed, based on the 50-foot frontage, they'd be allowed 100 square feet, 100 square foot size.
All right. So then, just to be clear, you would be asking for two deviations, shall we say? Because this is a special permit from the code. One would be having two signs where one is allowed, the other would be having 200 square feet when you're allowed 100 square feet.
Correct. And the thought process, you know, behind that, a couple of things. First of all, that we're kind of hindered by the way the building is turned. Frankly, most buildings, we try and put, you know, perpendicular to the road, any other site. I'm opening a store in Mansville, Pennsylvania, actually, next week that is perpendicular to the site so that there's larger frontage. This building is obviously a large building. It's just faced almost the wrong way because of the way that the site had to lay and the fact that this landlord had to have two tenants to be able to make the deal work and bring, you know, two businesses to the community. So that's one of the pieces. The frontage is longer. It's just faced, you know, toward Taco Bell because that's where the entrance is. And then the second is our decision not to try and go for a pylon. I do believe a building sign in this situation would be better because I don't want to cloud the other tenants' pylons being seen just by putting another one up because there's a lot like in a row there. And I feel like having building signage would be better for us and better for the other tenants around us not to have yet another pylon in that area. So that's why we went away from looking at pylons and went to this. Also, the landlord's looking to put a Baytown sign in that area and so going for pylon on top of that going up and it's just, there was a lot going on, so we looked for more building signage and that's the reason for asking for larger signs.
Okay. So each sign would be size-wise the same?
Yes.
It would be identical, the two signs would be identical?
They would be identical sizes, yes.
And what, what were the dimensions?
98.9.
But what, what by what?
Oh, uh, apologize.
Okay.
36 point, 30, 36 and a half high. 36 and a half inches high.
And how long then? Like, I'm not good at...
Um, give me one second. Sorry.
That'd be 20 something.
Yeah, 20 feet.
21.
Okay. Okay.
21 and half an inch, so.
So tell the board, if you would, what analysis you undertook of any formal or informal to arrive at that, that that size sign was, was needed.
So Verizon itself does a lot of analytics on locations based on the speed of traffic. They are actually generally more restricted now on us than town boards because they're wanting, they don't want gaudy signs. Some agents have put up really, really large signs, including myself in some areas. So they wanted to restrict us a couple of years ago. And so we let them do the analytics frankly, and so they can't, they come back to us with what they feel is, you know, needed in that area. So this is actually what Verizon brought to us. And then a lot of times the town board, it's under the required. And so our signs, just for some history, we're an agent and so we used to have Verizon and then a tagline, Solar Sales, underneath. I don't know if you've ever seen a store like that. Some of mine here in Rochester have that tagline. Now that it's just the word Verizon, they're very controlling of the size because it's just using their name. And so they did the analytics and based on, a lot of it has to do with the 45 mile per hour instead of it being a 35, just people driving too fast and being able to see it far enough in advance that they can slow down and turn. That's the main reason for the size that they gave for this one. And so I asked some questions specific to the area. Generally speaking with wireless, the larger our signs are, the more traffic we have. I mean, we've had stores that we've doubled the sign size, like after we had an underperforming location and the numbers doubled just because, again, it's people driving by every day and they happen to see us over and over again. And then when their phone breaks, it's in their mind that, hey, I lost my phone in the water, I'm going to go to that store. And so it's just more, you know, over history, us understanding what a site would need and then also Verizon doing, doing the numbers behind the scenes to tell us what they want us to do.
Okay. Do you have any renderings or, and if you sent them in?
I had, I did and they're right here if you want to...
Yeah, if you don't mind taking, what I'm wondering is, are this, they're not going to be too big in a building, I guess.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Okay.
Pass this over.
And Andy, do you, or does anybody know the approximate size of the Dollar Tree signs?
I don't remember it.
The Dollar Tree sign?
Yeah, down the road, Dollar Store or whatever it's called.
It's good size because it says Dollar Tree. I mean, big letters.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, the way I look at this, Dan, this is 98 square feet. They're allowed 100, right? I mean, for one sign.
Right.
I mean, so they're asking for one more sign the same size. I mean, if they were just given the one sign, it would be fine. They wouldn't even need a permit.
No.
I mean, the size, we're talking size.
Yeah. And the one sign would be the one sign.
Interesting.
Anybody else have any questions?
I guess I still go back to, are you going to be using any of the signage from the property in terms of wayfinding signs? Do you intend to be on those? Do you intend to be on the giant sign that's built outside of Baytown?
There is potential for panels in the Baytown sign. And so that is potential down the road to be on that whenever that is approved down the road. So we wouldn't be asking for a pylon, but we would have the, you know, ability based on what Alan's talking about. As far as the wayfinding signs, I'm, I'm not sure. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, I could. You know, the wayfinding signs again are just more, and I'm...
Yeah, come on, Alan. Sit down.
Alan Rainbow from Baldwin to Marco Group. The wayfinding signage is just that, it's directional, it's not advertisement and purpose. Just to direct people through the shopping center at decision points. But there may be a couple of traffic intersections and such where it's beneficial to have Verizon on the, on the wayfinding sign internally. That's yet to be determined, but certainly it's, it's in the cards as a possibility.
So just, I'm just, out of curiosity, you're going to have another tenant in that What if they want a monument sign or a pylon sign up front? And can they jump on at that point?
They would certainly be entitled to slats on the pylon sign coming into the parcel.
I mean, not the big one.
You're thinking of a monument right out front.
I'm thinking, yeah, a monument right out front.
Correct. Correct. Which is with multiple tenants on there.
Right.
She's saying a separate standalone monument.
No. No, we don't anticipate that happening for the rear tenant.
So no monument sign in the future either?
Well, so you're, you're committing as a representative of the landlord that any lease you enter into with another tenant would require them to refrain from applying for a separate pylon sign?
Yeah, I, I think we would have issue with that because of the fact, as Luke had mentioned, you know, just the multiple structures out at the roadway.
Yeah, no, I get it. I just want it to be clear because at this point, when a tenant comes in, you, you would be the one that would be able to control that with the lease.
Actually, the, they, that one pylon sign...
Takes it?
That's, that's all that's allowed for the property, so.
That's part of the signage.
All right, so no monuments.
So you, Verizon wouldn't even be entitled to it then?
No.
That's what you're telling me? Okay. Good. So let me ask you, I'm, again, safeguarding the questions as I...
No.
What can you do to, can you, can you reduce the size of the deviation request? I mean, it's all, it's 100% larger square footage. What, I'll just ask you simply, what can you live with if you were to get two signs, allow us to do our job to reduce the size of the deviation without...
Right.
Doing away the utility of the signs?
Again, the, with the sign band create, because the sign band itself is, like I just went there and took pictures, it's already created, like the actual band itself is created. So I, I think in the 80, 85 square foot range per sign, somewhere in that, maybe 80 in that range, we could, we could definitely live with. I think it gives us a presence on both sides, which is the more important piece for us.
Good. Well, I certainly appreciate your willingness to do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? All right. Then I will make a motion to approve the special permit with both deviations. I'm not calling them variances, I guess. But in any event, for two building mounted signs, maximum square footage for each 85 square feet.
Second.
We did do seeker on this before, right? Yes, we did, according to the note there. Okay. Any further discussion on this? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, both of you, for coming in both times.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. So that's it with tabled. And good luck, by the way, you're opening soon, huh?
Thank you so, yeah, we're six in next month, so we'll get the signs into protection tomorrow, so.
All right. Good.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Can I make a request?
Oh, sure.
Just remember to, if we could, go through all the...
Yeah. Yeah, let's do that.
In fact, I have my sheet here somewhere. A special permit.
Can I always make a request? Doesn't hurt to ask.
Let's see.
Do you want this one, a special permit for signs?
Yep. I have it here somewhere. So, the proposed sign is in harmony with standards for committed signs and within spirit, the answer and modify my motion to answer that in the affirmative. It's a commercial area.
For signs.
Developed plaza where there are several businesses which have more than one building mounted sign and larger square footage than allowed. There's no evidence that the proposed signs create any sort of hazard to the public. They're not going to be anything flashy or designed in such a manner to unduly cause attention from drivers in an unsafe manner. Certainly doesn't interfere in any way with the use and enjoyment of the highway for the same reasons. Okay. And it will help identify the business, obviously. That road, there's 45 miles an hour travel. That's the speed limit. We all know that people travel a lot faster occasionally, frequently on that road and that therefore, the request for two signs is reasonable under the circumstances. Anyone have anything to add?
Uh-uh.
Okay. If we didn't take a vote, then we'll take one now with those details. Okay?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Andy, for the reminder. Any questions for clarification on number one tonight? We have a shed with less setback, pretty clear application in any event. Recommended a type two, all right. Any questions for number, for clarification on number two? And any questions for clarification on number three?
I did have a question about this. When I went to visit, the owner had said that there was, that the inspector who came out to look at the property had some questions about the code, but when I looked at the application, there didn't seem to be any kind of issue with interpreting the code. So I just want to make sure that it's...
That I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. It was fairly straightforward to me, but I just wanted to ask about it.
Okay. And number four is...
Tabled until next one.
Per the request, adjourned, whatever we want to call it, per the request of the applicant. And would, could you, I drove by there this morning, but I may have missed it. I just wanted to see what signs they have now. And I saw McDonald's, the word, facing Empire, and then a Golden Arch facing north.
Yes.
And that was it?
That was it.
So they have the two, and then a lot in the windows. And actually, I don't know if it's an awning or whatever, but on the, on the drive-through window, window side, they had two things with little M's on them, but that looked to be interior too. I didn't know, but, okay. If I'm wrong on any of that, if you could, they could let, let us know, that would be helpful. It's always nice to know what they have now compared to what they're asking for, if it's an existing building. Okay. Anything else on tonight's agenda? No? All right. So we have about seven minutes. We'll, work session will be adjourned. We'll take a brief recess and start the public hearings at 7 o'clock. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penn Field Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting will take place in two parts. The first part will be our public hearings. We'll ask the applicant to come up to that podium and give us a name and address, and then explain to the board why the relief requested should be granted. Once the applicant is done, board members will likely have some questions of the applicant. And after that, we'll invite anyone in the audience that cares to speak about the application to come up and do the same thing. Give us his or her name and address and then speak about the application. After the public hearings are adjourned, we'll take a brief recess and we will reconvene in the back of the room to deliberate on tonight's applications and take care of any other business the board may have on its agenda. Members of the public are welcome at both the public hearings and the deliberations, although generally speaking, deliberations are times reserved for conversation amongst board members, board members with staff and with counsel. We have a light agenda tonight, I'd classify it. So, again, you're free to stay or if you need to or want to leave, you can call tomorrow and find out what action, if any, the board took on a particular item. We like to point out every month that the town, we think, does a really good job of notifying people in the community that applications are going to be heard so that people are fully informed of their right to come in and speak about the application. The town does that by sending out postcards. If you live within a certain number of feet of an application, of a property that's the subject of an application, the town posts the agenda on the website, posts it here on a bulletin board, and also makes the applicant put up a sign so that if you're driving by, you can see that as well. We welcome everybody's input. It makes our job easier in the sense it allows us more information in which to make our decision. So with that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you all. And Andy, may we have the first application, please?
Bill and Julie Bianchi, 1505 Five Mile Line Road, Penn Field, New York, 14526. Request an area variance to allow a shed with less side setback than permitted under section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 1505 Five Mile Line Road. The property is owned by Bill and Julie Bianchi and is owned R-1-20. SPL number 109.10-1-3. Application number 18Z-0046.
Hi.
Hi.
How's everything doing? So yes, we are requesting a side variance. We would like to do a setback of five feet instead of 10 feet on the north side of our property. We're going to be putting in a 10 by 20 woodtuck shed. One of the reasons that we chose the area to put the shed is just because our front yard is significantly larger than our backyard. Our front yard is about 134 feet and our backyard is about 57 feet in length. So it's really the one choice that makes the most sense for us. There's not going to be any changes to the character of our neighborhood. We chose a shed that fits in well with our property. It's a natural mahogany color. It has a metal green roof. It blends in kind of with the mature woods that are going to be behind the shed. There's also, our neighbor has recently installed a white fence, so we kind of want to put it there to kind of block that because we like seeing the woods back there and just make it more natural looking. We did talk to our neighbor and she was okay with that idea as well. Also, we did kind of play around with where it was going to be and we included in our picture packet, if the shed was 10 feet away from the sideline of our property, it would be more visible to the road, to Five Mile Line Road, people driving by. It would be kind of in the midline of our driveway and it would just stick out more. So we feel like by putting back five feet, it kind of hides it a little bit from the road too. Also, we did consider other places in our yard to put the shed, one being the back line of our property, but that would make it very visible. Our, in our neighborhood, the houses sit different, like our house is this way and then the other houses, there's two behind us, and it would be more visible to them if it was around the middle of our back line of our property. We considered putting the shed in our, we have a fenced-in area, but we would have to have the shed built on-site if we were to do that. And also, it would be more visible from Five Mile Line Road again, just because of the height of the shed. I think it was a little bit over 10 feet tall, so it would stick, it would, the height of it would show from our six-foot wood fence. So the shed is going to go in an, currently an old garden in unused space in our yard. It will also allow us to kind of clean up our side yard and make it look a little better too. And I think that's everything. If anybody has questions?
Yeah. You had, you had the shed laid out, am I correct, with those orange stakes?
Yes.
Okay. So where I saw where you were going to put it was in the flower bed, on the backside of the flower bed?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then in front of it, to the street, there is a lot of foliage there, or flowers and shrubbery, so it makes it more... Less visible from the street, am I correct?
Right.
Okay. And I was, you know, what kind of shed are you going to put on there?
It's a 10-by-20 wood tucks. It's a wood tuck shed. I have a picture of it included in the packet as well. Do you want me to hang it up here?
Yeah, why don't you put it up, just so people can see it?
So that's the shed. It just has the double doors on the front of it, and then it has a metal green roof on the top, so it kind of blends in with the woods that are behind it.
Right, a rustic look, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so you're not going to match your house, like the shingles of your house, you're going to go with the more rustic because of the woods in the background?
Right.
Okay. How about electricity? Are you putting any electricity?
No, we're not.
So there's no lights, so there's no electricity out there?
Correct.
Okay. And as you said, you did talk to the neighbors, right?
I talked to the neighbors, yes.
And they were fine with it?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I had, then.
Any other questions from the board?
Are there going to be... Is there going to be enough room behind there for you to get in and maintain it? Because you're right between...
We did think about that, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, because our neighbor's fence is not right on her property line. There's... There will be about 10 feet in between. Even with the five-foot setback, there will still be about 10 foot in between.
Okay, and you'll still be responsible for maintaining behind there?
Yeah, right.
You submitted, in your written application, some documentation about other areas in your yard where you thought about putting it?
Yes.
That either would be in compliance or may need a variance. I don't recall, but could you tell us why you rejected those areas and why you need to put it here?
Sure. The one area was along the backside of our property, which... Get that picture of our... I don't know if that would really help you. In our backyard... Maybe I do have it. Let me just take a quick look if I included a picture. But in our backyard, we did consider putting the shed along the backside of the property line. But then there are two houses. Actually, this picture kind of shows it. So the orange line kind of identifies the only spot that the shed could possibly go in our backyard, just because we have that fenced-in area as well. And if we were to put it here, there's a neighbor over here, and then there's another house behind them. And their backyard is actually this area here. So having that would kind of just block their... I don't know. It would make it not as open as it is right now. The other area that we considered was inside our fenced-in area. And one reason we decided not to do that just was because it would have to probably be built on-site. And the other reason is that where we would put it, the fence that we have is a wood fence. It's six feet tall, and the actual shed is... Let me just double-check here. I think it was over 10 feet tall. So that would really show from the road. So we felt like the least visible spot is where we chose.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
You mentioned pre-built on-site versus our off-site, and then built on-site. Was there a financial difference in the two? If you had it pre-built already and then brought in, is it a less expensive shed, then?
Honestly, we didn't look at that. We just... We happened to find one that was pre-owned, so it was significantly reduced price. So that's why we went with that.
Okay. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Fred and Siobhan Sanchez, 30 Aspen Drive, Rochester, New York, 14625. Request an area variance to allow an in-law addition with less side setback than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 30 Aspen Drive. The property is owned by Fred and Siobhan Sanchez and is zoned R-1-20. SPL number 123.12-1-12. Application number 18Z-0047.
Probably should have said something before you got up here, but if you want to wait and be called last... Yeah, if you want to wait, well... No, it's if you want to.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, Art.
It's all right.
Andy started talking too fast.
Sorry.
So let's go to number three.
Okay.
Mike Volp, Ted Collins.
By the way, it's not going to be that... It probably won't be that long, but...
Good evening.
Oh, yeah?
Good evening.
Mike Volp, Ted Collins, Tree and Landscape, 8000 Victor Mendon Road, Victor, New York, 14526. On behalf of Mark Malli, request an area variance to allow a patio with less rear setback than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 1 Sunleaf Drive. The property is owned by Mark Malli and is zoned R-1-20. SPL number 109.01-2-101. Application number 18Z-0048.
Hi.
Hello. What we're presenting here tonight is a variance for the backyard of my client's home, which actually has a 30-foot setback rule. And the main...
Do you mind just saying your name?
Oh, sorry.
Your record?
Mike Volp.
Thank you.
We have... We've got the setback issue because my client has, I guess, what I would... What I would call is a pre-existing condition, where the house is placed very close to that back. It actually is like pretty much as close to 30 feet as you could be from the back of this concrete porch to the property line, which, from the site survey that my client had on file, puts the property line roughly right on this maple tree that you see here. So what we'd like to do is gain access to the backyard. The way the house is set up, his only access to the outside is literally the front door or the garage on the opposite side of the home. So he really can't... He can't do anything with the backyard. I mean, he literally doesn't do anything in terms of enjoyment, because there's no easy access. The... My client actually did look into possibly doing an in-ground or installed spa and some other options for the area. And from his research, he could actually put a spa in here within that setback, because it's a different requirement, is what our understanding is. But we didn't really want to go that way, and we actually were just looking for a patio space. So what I've done is a little plan I put together here, which I'm not sure if you guys were all given copies of the plan. So what I'm proposing is to basically do the minimum size to accommodate a table, chairs, maybe a possible, you know, extra grilling station or something that is literally right off of that concrete existing raised elevated porch. And what this does is just give him a nice sort of slice of life back there that he can entertain and do things and enjoy his property in the back and gain access through the porch. That's actually at the finished floor elevation of the home. The other part of this design, what we're proposing, is, you know, to not just have it wide open and be in everyone's eye from anywhere around here. There were... There is some existing vegetation that does block it pretty nicely. We think that, you know, given a variance, we would... We would actually line the patio with some green giant arborvitae, and just to selectively block that view directly off the back of the house, along with some hydrangea and some other larger shrubs that just accentuate and basically soften the edges, help it mend itself to the landscape. The other thing on this that I think there was no other... There was no other concern with, but the shed is being placed back over here. Again, trying to place it so it's not wide in the open of anyone, and that's really it on that. I don't think I have any other points.
Okay, oh, thanks for coming and explaining. So my question, and I think you might have already answered it, was is this the minimum size that you need? Is this something where you could go smaller on a patio, requiring less of a variance?
If we were to go smaller, it wouldn't be by much. I mean, just from just sizing and using it for accommodating like 10 to 15 people in a max situation, you know, the spacing just allows you to walk down the stairs through, you know, so you're not right on top of people if there are people at that table and chairs. So you can walk around it, walk through the space.
So you think that's what you need?
I think that's what we would... We would need.
Okay. And then I don't see the patio jutting out to the side at all. It will be contained behind... Entirely behind the house, so you can't see it from the front.
You won't... You won't be able to see it from the front. Yeah, I kept everything as tight as possible on all sides.
Right. And is there any lighting, any... Anything that would be a distraction to a neighbor?
There... There was talk of some landscape lighting, but it's very low wattage, downward-facing bulbs. And they actually be on the inside of this outer rim, so...
Okay, so nothing that would impact... And have you talked with the neighbors about it?
We've had a few conversations, I believe. One personally with me. My client, Mark, may have had others.
I spoke with the neighbor behind me Thursday. He's here tonight. You know, we're just trying... We're just trying to do something.
Interrupt you and ask you to come up and identify yourself as well, yeah?
Sorry.
Mark Malli, the homeowner.
Okay.
So I spoke to Martin when Mike came. When it was brought... This was brought to our attention when we were just making sure we were okay with the shed. And so Martin was there the day we were kind of marking things off and looking at it. So I approached Martin Thursday. I didn't have the plans with me, but tried to explain what was going on and that we'd be looking for a variance. So he's here tonight. He told me before the meeting that if I tear down this tree and put up evergreens, he would be fine with it. I don't necessarily care for an ultimatum, but, you know, if we did that, move the vegetation out instead of by the patio, but I guess I just been looking for a simple patio in my backyard. There is no way to get out of that house to the backyard except through the front door located here or a garage door here. Lived there for two years, I've never used the backyard.
Okay, thank you.
I got one there.
Okay.
Older and bad lamps. Do you show the stairs coming off that porch? Because how... That porch is quite high in a backyard, correct?
Yeah.
How high is it?
I believe it's... If I'm standing next to it, the top of the porch is probably four and a half, five feet tall? Maybe more?
I'll get up, we're gonna...
Will you show the photo?
Yeah. The house, and it doesn't really show in the photo, but the land kind of drifts off here.
Right.
That's one of the reasons you won't really see it from the road. So it's higher in the back than in the front, but it's, you know, it's one, two, three, four. Looks like 10 courses.
Yeah, I would say it'd be more like eight foot or 12 foot.
We put in and have a permit on the stairs.
Okay.
That's been a permit.
I just see the railing cut of where you're going to put the stairs.
Yeah.
Okay, it was already cut when I walked back there.
Yeah.
So they're going to go straight down to the backyard. I mean, to the back-back of the porch.
Yeah, flip that over again.
Yeah, along the side of the porch.
Right.
Oh, you're going to go that way?
I redid the railings because they were rotting.
Okay, because I was going to say, where I saw the cut...
No, no, no.
Was directly in the back.
No, we were redoing the railings with the permanent covered wood.
Okay.
So you might have come in the middle of the railings getting done. So currently, the railing here has all been redone and redone to here with the white.
Okay, so it's coming off the side?
Yes.
It's going to your side yard and then down?
Yeah, just as the permit was applied for, and just as that drawing shows.
Okay, I got it now, it's better.
Yep.
So just a quick clarification. Right now, that has vegetation around the patio. And then you have no plans, or you do have plans to put in some buffering at the rear line?
I didn't plan to.
Yeah, that developed tonight.
Tonight. What we found when Mike and his team came, this maple, what's it got on it, a root?
It's got a massive girdling root around the base. So I, you know, I instructed Mark and his neighbor Martin that, you know, I'd recommend thinking about replacing that tree structure with, you know, other arborvitae's or things that are going to screen it, right? Because it's going to... It'll decrease in health over the next couple of years, or whatever it is. But there's no real telltale way of knowing exactly how long. But that whole thought was basically, you know, just as my recommendation to keep the buffer there.
Okay.
And just a point. We've taken these measurements off the survey map that I had when I bought the house. I offered to have the property surveyed as part of this process. I got the impression that wasn't necessary. I'm not sure who owns the tree completely. Looks like it's in the middle of the property, but...
So putting any buffering on that line is going to result in whose tree is it removing the tree first?
Yeah, or, you know, or me bearing the burden of the entire expense, because I just want to have a patio in my backyard?
Okay.
I'm a little frustrated.
Well, you want to have a patio in your backyard with a variance.
Correct.
Right.
So...
I understand. You know, and like I said, you know, as I sat down after Martin addressed me, you know, we're putting a lot of money into the plants and stuff here, you know. Do we move that out to there, you know? I don't know what it costs to remove a tree, though. You know, is it going to cost me...
A few thousand.
You know, to do that? That might not be dead for 10 years?
What my last tree cost.
You know, no one can give us a timeline of life of the tree. Is it going to die in a year, is it going to last 10 years?
Okay.
Anything else from the board?
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience care to speak about this?
Over here.
Come on up.
Thank you. All right, am I done?
Not... Maybe not. We'll see.
Okay.
Don't go too far.
Hello, okay, my name is John Rizzo, and I'm a neighbor of Mark. We live on the adjacent property, 3 Sunleaf Drive.
Okay.
Which would be this property here. And this is the first I had a chance to see the drawing of what... The plan of what's happening. So I just wanted to check it out before anything's built, if there's any potential conflict.
You got bad lamps, too, huh?
Mike, that looks like a good drawing. Looks very nice, good design.
John, I apologize for not...
Oh, no problem, no. I've been busy and you're busy.
And in this... I... I'm glad the town found this when we were asking about the shed before we spent money.
Oh, yeah.
It kind of came up on us, you know, me, as far as being surprised that we needed variance to do it.
Okay, so well, the reason... I didn't... Wasn't clear on the reason why there's a town hall meeting. We did get a postcard in the mail about this. So basically, is the concern that the patio encroaches in the setback limits? Is that the idea? And for the back of the yard, but not the side of the yard? Okay, because that would be the only thing that would impact us, is the side, because the way the builder, Jim Barbado, located 1 Sunleaf Drive house, he pushed it close, as far away from Five Mile Line Road as he could, and which is very close to the... Our lot line. And the way he... Jim Barbado located our house is very close to the lot line, because we have a pie-shaped lot. So between the two houses, there's not a whole lot of space, considering the size of house in that subdivision. So, you know, any little thing that gets done, it could have a potential impact. So as long as it's within the setback on the east side of the property, I don't foresee a problem in the back setback, because of the... There's very little room to begin with in the backyard. It's always been like that before Mark obviously moved in. The original owners had this similar problem. And because it looks like it's just a... What is it, a stone paver patio?
Yeah, it'll be like a modular concrete paver.
Yeah, I would think if, worst-case scenario, if the town had to get in the easement to do any work, digging or anything, that would be a movable structure where it could be lifted up to do work versus, you know, fixed structure. So I'd have to say I'm good. I don't have any problems with it, not that I'm going to stop you.
No, I apologize. I just, like I said, wasn't even where we needed a variance to put the patio in. Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Come on up.
Hi, so my name is, uh, Martin Trulinski, I live at fifteen twelve Five Mile, uh, right behind his property. Now, I don't wanna tell him what to do, I just wanna voice my concerns. One thing, uh, as you can see from the image, that it's, uh, you know, this is my backyard right here, and it's, you know, pretty wide open over there. So, you know, I would prefer, I would, you know, I'm not happy about it, but I would prefer if there were more, uh, more of a natural barrier. So if there were more, uh, could be more evergreens or maybe some more, uh, some more pines around here, I think, uh, that would make it much nicer with more of a barrier. Another concern is, uh, you know, with them being outside, more, uh, more issues with the dogs, perhaps, uh, barking more. There have been issues where a dog has been outside barking all day. And, uh, there had been a few occasions where I had to pick up some droppings from the dog on my property. And, uh, and I just have a, had a four, have a four-month-year-old daughter. And, uh, just concerned that sometimes, uh, smells smoke coming onto my property. I don't know who, I don't know, uh, so just concerned about them, with them being outside more and that. So those are just my concerns that I have, and, uh, just wanted to put that out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So if I heard that correctly, smell of smoke, um, dog, and just, uh, buffering, let's say. If, I don't know if you wanna address any of those or not, you don't have to, but it's up to you.
We, we have two golden retrievers and a, we got a new puppy about a month and a half ago.
Okay.
Um, my girlfriend, uh, is home most of the day. So the neighbor on the other side of Martin's house on Five Mile came to our house Thursday night last week, um, and expressed frustration. We would put the puppy on the porch at times. And I said, hey, I, a barking dog is annoying, well, and I, I, since then, we haven't even left the dog outside unattended once. At all.
Okay.
So, I didn't know Martin had a baby until the other neighbor told us that. My girlfriend smokes, I want her to quit. She smokes on the porch right now. She'll probably smoke on the patio until she quits. And I do my best to clean up the dog droppings, um.
Okay. I probably should've asked when you were up here, but let's see if we can get an answer. How far from the edge of the proposed patio is it to your neighbor's house? Do you, do we know ballpark figure, how many feet?
To the house?
Sure.
I don't know. I know that from the patios, from the patio to the property line is seventeen feet.
Right, and I'm asking from, from the property line to your.
To his house.
To your house, no idea.
I guess twenty feet, fifty feet?
This morning, it looked to be about twenty-five feet.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, close, close, it's not right on top of the property line, right?
I should be able to get it for you.
Okay.
Well, uh, these guys have cited it for, about that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the board? Anyone else in the audience?
Yes, I have one more.
Well, yeah, come on up.
Um, because of the proximity of the patio and the side of the house, the, the small distance between our house and your house, um, I'm concerned, what would be the primary use of the patio? Would it be personal or business or any combination? Just personal? I don't have a problem with that.
And, and we don't have children, um, we've been there for two years, uh, it would be personal only.
Okay.
Well, or a personal gathering.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. Though, that's fine, I just, I've just be, be, was, would be concerned if, say there was a lot of customers coming, cause sometimes they cut, they walk through our yard, if they walk between houses, we're afraid we would lose our privacy with the windows, perfect. And just for the record, I met all three of their dogs, they are wonderful dogs. Those golden retrievers are great little dogs, are great big dogs, and, uh, the new one is a smaller.
I saw a terrible one, Dan came over, cause, uh, we have one dog in the neighborhood that barks quite a bit, the big one.
We, can you come up?
So, we, regardless of the outcome of this, we, barking dogs can be irritating, we, we, we will continue to monitor that now that we're aware of the trouble that it's caused.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else in the audience? Okay, thank you very much. By the way, I, I should've noted earlier that application number four, the McDonald's there in Baytown is, uh, at the request of the applicant, gonna be moved to next month. So hopefully, nobody's here on that one, if you are, my bad.
Fred and Siobhan Sanchez, thirty Aspen Drive, Rochester, New York, one four six two five. Request an area variance to allow an in-law addition with less side setback than permitted under section two fifty dash five point one dash F one of the code at thirty Aspen Drive. The property is owned by Fred and Siobhan Sanchez and is zoned R dash one dash twenty, SPL number one two three point one two dash one dash one two. Application number eighteen Z dash zero zero four seven.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, uh, my name is Art Renato, I'm the architect on the project. And, uh, the request from the owner was to construct an in-law living space for the owner's, uh, mother. And, uh, the, the request was also for approximately seven hundred square feet of living space with an exterior deck and, uh, a parking space for the vehicle. What we have done here is, uh, we have a, an addition that is twenty-six by twenty-six onto the back of the existing garage, which takes the shape here, and, uh, twenty-six out plus another eight foot for the deck. Uh, we will be at that point approximately a hundred feet to the rear property line. And at this point on the existing garage, that corner is twenty-three point, uh, subfraction uh, from the existing property line to the north. Uh, essentially, we have another situation where there is a pool area, a pool, uh, equipment area that is roughly six foot by five foot. Uh, it's a concrete slab with a pool pump, uh, filter and so on, all the pool equipment would be in this position. We can't move the addition close to the existing building because of the fact that it would be kind of expensive, not kind of, but it would be expensive to redo, redo all of the piping and so on that goes underground to a pool area that's at grade level in the rear of the house. Uh, the grade actually slopes to the rear about five courses from the face of the, uh, front of the house to the rear of the house. It's what is known as a front-to-back split. The living area is at one level, and there are stairs down to a family room level, which then opens out flush onto grade. The pool area is flush with that existing patio that's in this area. We have twenty-three and a fraction feet to the property line on the north. And, uh, with the restriction of the pool area and the request for roughly seven hundred square feet of living space, we're going to add about thirteen feet to the existing garage to make a comfortable parking area for a vehicle. Uh, in, uh, shopping plazas, you're gonna find that your parking space is anywhere from ten to eleven foot wide. Doesn't give you much room to walk around the vehicle, and when you open your doors, you're right at the next vehicle. So we gave them a little bit extra room in the garage space, thirteen feet, uh, to clear opening and closing the doors. So that being said, because the property line tapers to the rear, we're gonna wind up in this back corner, one foot over the property line. And, uh, at this point, we're at the required ten feet. And by the time we get to this point, we're going to be one foot over the, uh, required ten-foot setback. So we, we're requesting nine feet as a variance to the existing, uh, setbacks. The grade tapers to the rear, and, uh, by the time we get to this point, as the grade tapers, we're going to be about six courses out of the grade. And essentially, we're going to be almost level with the existing pool deck. Uh, actually, it's a concrete patio enclosed with a fence. And we will then stop the fence short, uh, and butt it up against the back of the building so that the deck is enclosed within that fenced-in area, and the stairs will lead into the fenced-in area as well. Are there any questions regarding the design of the, uh, structure?
I, I have a few. Um, can you talk about, uh, how the addition will match the existing house, or are you gonna keep the?
Who's talking, okay, I'm sorry.
Um, will the siding match the?
The siding will match, it's currently a vinyl drop siding, they call it. It's a flatboard with kind of an indentation, a concave indentation.
Okay.
And will match the color and the siding is close to what is there already.
Okay, um, and this addition, it's a, it's a single-story addition, so will it project higher than the existing house?
It will not project higher than the existing house, which has actually four levels to it. So the existing house, I got a picture of what that's gonna look like. Get some more of these. Okay, let's see if we can work this out right. Okay, the existing house, the high point is a bedroom area on the fourth level. The actual addition is this garage, and there's a dash line here representing where the line, the roof line of the, uh, new roof is going to fall. From the side, this is the new portion of the garage. And, uh, this is in, in the beyond, this is where the roof line is of the existing garage. There's quite a large overhang in the front of the garage as it exists right now. We're planning on dropping back roughly eight to ten inches back from the front corner of that existing garage and creating a new roof line which mimics the existing, and then we'll tie, tie our new roof into that, uh, new roof line. So essentially, this is the north elevation of that, uh, building. Uh, what it does too is it provides privacy to the swimming pool, and it also provides a sound barrier to the, property to the north. Because when you're in the pool, oftentimes, especially children, they make a lot of noise. And that will be buffered by the addition as well. So we're kind of protecting both sides, we're protecting the pool from visual, and we're protecting the property to the north from the sound, the noise.
And then, um, when you designed the addition, did you take into account the existing home and what it looks like? And to, to try to match it as best you can with the character?
The character of the existing house is kind of contemporary, and there's nothing that you can do to, unless you get into like an old English design or so on, there's nothing you can do to violate that appearance. It's pretty simple in the rear, as this is pretty simple, and of course, there's windows and doors here, which I have not shown. But essentially, it's a pretty straightforward, simple design, and this matches that simple design.
And then can you, um, talk about any, uh, alternative designs that you looked at? Um, from, from your experience, was there a reason you chose, uh, let's say, seven hundred square feet and not six hundred square feet? Where you could've been a little farther from, from the property line?
It was at the owner's request that we stay roughly around six, uh, seven hundred square feet.
Okay, and that took into considerations of the needs for inside the addition of what you needed?
That's correct, yeah. The floor plan itself works very, very well at that, uh, level of, uh, square footage. We have a small kitchenette here, we have a dining space that can levers out two feet. We have a nice living space, we have a full-size bedroom closet, and a larger bath than normal as we have a washer dryer in a enclosed closet, stackable washer dryer. And it's geared, if in case we need to convert that into handicap accessibility, uh, we have the option of, of taking one or two small partitions down and rearranging some of the fixtures to create that, uh, handicap facility.
And can you talk about why you might wanna make that handicap and, and you need the extra space for that?
Well, the extra space itself is number one for a wheelchair turning radius. Five-foot diameter is normally what we would allow. And, uh, we would also have, we would probably replace the tub with a, uh, a five-by-four-foot walk-in shower. And taking into consideration that the vanity is removable and the toilet is movable, we would rearrange the space to accommodate, uh, that handicap.
Excellent, um, and in terms of the exterior for the drainage and things like that, are there gutters collecting water here for the addition? And how will that water be routed?
Right now, right now, we open spill onto the grade, so there's no connection necessary. And, uh, the only other thing would be the sanitary drainage, which is within the existing house. And we may have to, uh, excavate through the garage in order to bring the, uh, soil pipe through the existing residence.
Okay, that's all I have for questions.
Andy, I, I got a couple. Could you go over one more time, I, I think I heard it.
Sure.
The dimensions from where the garage is now to the lot line, and how far are you going over way up by the garage?
At this northwest cor, northwest corner, we have twenty-three point some fraction to the property line.
Okay.
We're going to extend the garage thirteen feet to the north, and we're going to reduce that setback at that point to ten point some fraction feet. The unfortunate part of it is, is that the property line tapers to the rear.
Yes.
And as a result, this far corner is now one foot over the property line, and that's what the variance application was.
Yeah, I got that.
For, okay.
My situation or my understanding is, as that lot line goes back, you are violating the ten-foot setback long before that foot. You may be a half a foot in violation, like six foot up.
Continuously from that point back to the nine foot, there's gonna be a small portion of that one foot.
Exactly, right.
It's gonna be over the line.
So you're only asking for one foot back in that corner, or are you asking for one foot all the way along?
Well, it, I guess, uh, not knowing what the exact requirement would be, I think that, yes, continuously to that point. If we took a foot from that point all the way back, we would be within the setback requirements for the complete distance, for the full distance.
Okay, is that what the variance says, Andy?
Uh, it's requesting, well, it's advertised as, uh, requesting a variance to allow an in-law addition with less side setback.
Okay, so you, they'll get one foot all the way from the garage back? Okay, I just wanna make sure it's good, because like I says, I hate to give them one foot at the back end of the property, then after they build it, you go out and, and they need a half a foot up somewhere else by the garage.
If you were to measure along that same line.
Yeah.
To the property line, there would be various increments of that one foot.
That's my point.
As it tapers.
That's my point, so if you want one foot all the way along, you're safe.
That's correct.
If you get one foot in the back corner.
That's correct.
You're done, because you build it.
And also, along those lines, even if, if you were to get one foot variance from end to end.
Right.
It's not your intent to take, uh, to, to use that one foot for, you know.
Building larger.
Right, you're, you're only gonna use it where you need it. In other words, you're not gonna, uh, say, oh geez, we got one foot on the front end too, so let's make it larger.
Extend that corner and then taper the, the building line.
Right.
To go from a ten-foot setback at this point, tapering back to the nine feet. No, we would, that would be not.
Giving you one foot from front to end just as.
Right.
Because it's easier and.
That's correct, from this point back. From this point back, we would need one foot.
So from the back of the garage you're pointing to, correct?
This is the, right now, this would be 10 point some odd feet at that corner of the garage, the new garage.
Okay.
I've got the exact numbers down here.
No, it's okay. We get it.
We just need an explanation.
The lot line is not perfectly parallel with the proposed line of the addition.
That's correct.
See that? I paid attention in geometry. Sometimes.
Sometimes.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this?
I'm Carol Mulcahy, and I own the property right next door at 38 Aspen Drive. You here?
Yeah.
Nice being on this side of the podium here. I have no problem with an in-law apartment on this property, but I do have a problem with the location. And the reason is, they're coming right practically onto my property line with just a minimum setback, a little bit more some places, but less all along my whole lot line. My main problem is, is this is going to be a wall right across my entire kitchen and my living room side. And there'll be no way of seeing anything but the wall, because when the property goes down, my thing is level, sort of. And so you look, you're going to look right straight at the wall. The garage that they're going to put in is level on the top, okay? But then it goes right down. So that really concerns me, because right now, I won't be able to see anything except a wall, literally. The, I'm trying to think here how that went. Oh, my living room also, I only have two kitchen windows, okay? But that's my whole kitchen there, because it's a narrow kitchen, and it's right there. The living room windows also are there. So this addition is going to be higher than my windows, which means that if there are windows on that side, I don't have any privacy in my kitchen, because I can't close, you know, I can't, if I put curtains over it, then I won't have any light, because there's just the two windows. And the same with the dining room. Excuse me. Oh, I would just like to say here, while I'm thinking of it, how lucky those other neighbors were, because they talk to their neighbors. I went over to my neighbors, and they, Mrs. Sanchez refused to speak to me. Not only did she refuse to speak to me, she insisted I get off her property screaming. And about 45 minutes later, she had the sheriff come to my house to tell me to stay off of her property. Now, all this is ever since this has come up. I tried to explain to her that we like, every town wants people to talk to the neighbors. She wouldn't listen. She just kept screaming, "Get off my property." Which, you know, I really, you know, wish that I had neighbors like that. And the whole thing is, we haven't been having problems. We were actually friendly until this came up, and they never mentioned it until I, you know, found out about it from the town. So anyway, now, the reason why I think it should be on the other side is there's way more room on the other side. There's like three times as much room. Not only is there that much room on the other side, but they have a fence that goes in on the plot map. It shows the area from the fence to the lot line. However, it's all they would have to do, they could take, there's still a lot of grassy area on the inside of the fence. So if they took down their fence, they would have a whole lot, even more room. And this, the whole area there, right from the top down, is way larger than anything on my side. It also doesn't impact that other neighbor virtually at all, because their house faces a different way. The garage is on the Sanchez's side. And the only thing that affects it at all is two little windows on an enclosed porch. And this neighbor said they don't mind at all if they put the thing on their side, because it wouldn't impact them. And so that's my main thing about location. Let's see, do I have anything else here? Oh, and then also, they're going to add in another garage, okay? Which means the house is going to look lopsided kind of from the front, because the house is a little angle. And they're going to have three garages together, and then this end of the house is dropping right, you know, is right just there. It's going to be, kind of looks lopsided. And this addition goes right out. It's like going down here and right in the middle, putting an arm out. And then, also, from the middle of the yards, is going to be this deck that's up high that's going to have a landing and stairs going down. So not only will it be impacted on the side, but in my backyard, not only would I be losing some of my property setback that I would normally be entitled to, but I'm also going to be looking at a deck going down, which is just going to jet out by itself essentially, because it's coming out from the back. I think it's the living room or something. So that also concerns me. Then another thing that concerns me a bit is the size of this. This house is the biggest house on our block there. They already are bigger, and then they wanted to add in another 700 feet. Originally, they wanted 600 and something, and then they added another 16 feet to it. And now they've added another few feet to that, to get up to 700. You know, I just wonder about that, that keeps adding up. And when I asked, when I tried to talk to him about it, he just said, oh, what's the difference? Just a few extra feet. Well, from 600 feet, when you're being totally impacted on your lot line, it does make a My home is, I have a ranch, and it's only, what is my home? My home is only, I should know what my home is, 14 something, 1472 square feet. 1431 square feet. So they now, without even the addition, they have 1,027 square feet more than I do on the exact same size properties. It seems to me as though they're trying to put two entire homes. Now, my living space, by the way, is going to be only, well, now, I don't think it'll be any less my entire living space than this apartment is going to be. And it looks like they're trying to put these two homes on this property and having them totally separate in a way. Now, there is the one connection, obviously. But they've got, they're keeping their home, or trying to keep their home totally as it is, without making any kind of, anything different whatsoever on any side, or in the back, or anywhere else, and just impacting my side. As far as this equipment and everything, it's all in one little equipment case. You know, we're not talking about a great big long area or anything. As far as the noise barrier that you talked about, that's ridiculous, because, number one, they're not out there that much. They're only out there once in a while on the weekends. The noise is not a problem whatsoever. We have kids in the back, you know, a little baby. There's no, and as far as the noise, they have a little baby, she's not a little baby, she's three years old, and a son. And so it's not like there's a slew of kids back there. And when they first moved in, they made a big point that they don't have parties or things to make a lot of noise. So, and they haven't made any, you know, there has been no noise, so we don't really need to have a sign, a barrier. And I kind of wonder, when I listen to it, you would almost think that the mother-in-law is ill or something. The mother-in-law is as active as any of us are. I wonder about how much thought has gone into this just in general, because the father-in-law just died a few months ago in the spring. And within a couple of months of that, they were already in here to the town for that. And, you know, they normally say to wait a year just to see. I don't expect them to wait a year if they don't want to, but I'm just saying, because things look different sometimes after you've gotten over that period of grief in the beginning. I don't know. And then I wonder, too, if they have checked out with the builders now, building the homes with the in-law apartments right in them, with the garages and the driveways and everything built right in, and is a part of the home, and, you know, with the setbacks and everything that the people, you know, normally are entitled to. The father died young, the mother-in-law is young, they're going to have many years of their mother-in-law, which is fine. I wish I had my mother living with me. But it would seem to me that the money that they're going to get, the mother-in-law's house is for sale, the money they're going to get from the mother-in-law's house, the very large expense they're putting into this house, they could probably, you know, get a new home instead of adding on and spending this money with a house that's almost 60 years old, in a neighborhood that is changing drastically from what it was. We're getting all kinds of traffic from the new developments all over, which is not greatly safe, you know, for kids. Some of the neighbors have put up signs, you know, saying, "Drive as if your child live here." So anyway, it just seems to me that, you know, a lot more thought would go, you know, maybe they didn't go into it because of the death of the father-in-law and the grief still. And Freddie had told me just a couple of weeks ago that how difficult it's been with the grief, so that's it. Now, what was not mentioned was the driveway. And now they're going to put another driveway in. They call it an expansion. It's kind of interesting, the difference between expansion and another driveway. If a driveway goes right from the door, yes, it is expanding the driveway, but it's also another driveway.
So they'll have two driveways?
Well, yeah, they'll have two driveways.
Two separate driveways.
Well, I don't know what they're going to do. I would imagine they would put them...
Well, you're commenting that they're going to have two driveways.
I would think they'd put them together. I would think, but I don't know.
So they'll be expanding the existing driveway to make it wider to accommodate the second bay?
Yeah. I would think that's what they would do.
Thank you. I've got a question for you. You commented that the view was a big issue when you look at your living room, your dining room. If this was one foot farther away, can you describe the difference in the view you would experience?
No, one foot further away, as far as the thing, would not make all that difference. My main thing is that the other side of the property would be not impacting anybody, and the wall would be way over on the other side, and it may not even be as long. And it wouldn't need a variance going all the way down the hill, for sure. Wouldn't need any, probably any variance. And it could be even shorter because of the way the other side of the house is. There's a little alcove-like where they have a generator on the other side. Oh, and also, at one point, Fred mentioned that, told a neighbor that it was very expensive because he'd have to move the gas pipe. And he gave various figures from, you know, $15,000 up to past $30,000, what he said it would cost. So I tried to check into that, and I was told that very often, gas pipes don't have to be moved at all. What you need is an access. Obviously, there needs to be an access, because if something happens, you're not going to go in and, you know, rip up somebody's floor. But we've just had a problem in the neighborhood with the gas. In fact, I may be the one that reported the smell of the gas, because it was terrible over at my house. And so the gas company has come, and the lawn had already been, you know, showed where the pipe went and everything, and they came on the side of, the other side of the house, the other side of their house. So I don't really think that that's a concern. And also, there are so many changes in the code. It used to be that if you had an in-law apartment, you had to have shared space. And in this place, there's absolutely no shared space. The shared space normally used to be the kitchen and the living room. My guess is the reason why that's been changed, or a large part, is because of all the new homes now that are being built with the in-law apartments, you know, which makes sense in that respect. Unfortunately, in this respect, it doesn't make that much sense, at least not to me. Now, the, let's see, the gas pipe, the access, the garage. Okay. And I did mention that the mother-in-law is certainly not handicapped and is young. Probably in early 60s, probably not going to be using a wheelchair or anything, even though he tried to make it sound like she might be soon, or at least, in my opinion, it sounded that way. So I guess, really, that's all I have.
That was very thorough. Thank you.
Oh, no, I want to go through the things here. Whether an undesirable change is in the neighborhood. We have no in-law apartments, as far as I know, anywhere in the whole area over there. Whether or not it would be a detriment to nearby properties, it's certainly a detriment to my property, both as I'm there and also for resale value. I don't know how many people want to buy a home with a half an acre, and only their view and the main rooms that they're in is looking out at a wall. Whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible method rather than an area of variance, absolutely, there is so much extra room on the other side, it would be very simple to put it on the other side. Particularly since the neighbor over there is perfectly happy to have it on that side. Whether the requested variance is substantial, this is the only thing that doesn't fit into this criteria, it is absolutely not substantial, except that it's my whole lot line over on the other side. Whether it will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, obviously, it's going to have an impact on my physical conditions, you know, since it's impacting my kitchen and my living room. And also, I think it's going to look out of place from the backyard, certainly going to look out of place from my backyard and from the other backyards that go down as far as Old Pond Road. Whether it was self-created, absolutely self-created. So it seems like four out of five factors don't lead to this. So I think that that's really all I want to say. I'm sorry that because of this has caused problems. I'm sorry, I think she refused to understand that we, everybody likes to have people talk to their neighbors. She wouldn't even let me explain it to her. So it's too bad. But this is what I have to live next to. And, you know, probably, I would think that they would also want to get around their side of their in-law addition, instead of having it right, just either on the line or very close to the line. Thank you.
Let me answer.
Well, I just wanted to ask Andy a couple of things. And very simply, Andy, if there was not a need for this one-foot variance request, would the applicant even have to be in front of this board in order for this project to go forward?
No, the in-law use is a permitted accessory use. So it's just the setback, the minor setback, that is the issue.
Okay. All right. And is there any requirement for an in-law apartment that the person proposed to reside there be disabled in any manner?
No.
Okay. You guys, any further questions, either of Andy or...
Definitely not, no.
No, I just didn't know if they want to answer.
Well, yeah.
Usually, we allow the applicant to answer.
I was getting to that there, Joe.
Okay.
That's all right. I just wanted to make sure that if anybody had any further questions of Andy here, but it sounds like no.
So I'm Siobhan Sanchez. It's Fred Sanchez. We live at 30 Aspen Drive.
I'm sorry. Bad ears.
My name's Siobhan Sanchez. This is my husband, Fred Sanchez. We live at 30 Aspen Drive. I don't want to get into answering each and one of those. Drive. I don't want to get into answering each and one of those situations, so-
It's up to you.
You know, since my father was sick, I mean, even when he was well, we were exploring an in-law option because of the house that they lived in in the city. And, you know, my parents are getting older, no younger. My dad was 72 when he passed in May and my mother is 69. She'll be 70 in January. My mother is an only child. She has, my sister lives in Maryland, so I'm her only daughter here. So that is not true. There has been lots of thought and process, lots of estimates, lots of, an actual builder had came up to the House Gerber Building, gave an estimate. Rochester Homes, Quality Homes, came out and gave an estimate. Both of the estimates were given and as well as Albright, which represents, he's an architect for them. So both estimates were given, both sides were explored. Both of the sides, the way our lot is, both of the sides have equal amount of space on them as far as setbacks. So even if we were to go to the other side, there would be an equal amount of setback towards the rear of the line. As far as like talking to the neighbors, I did talk to Chris and Sam, which are on our right-hand side, which is what Carol was speaking of because we're much closer with them. And Freddie's much closer with Sam. So they said that they were all for it for either side. And Trent, he lives like right in back of him. We know him, so we talked to him. So, you know, my husband talked to him and told him that we were doing an in-law. Carol found out about the in-law because she got a notice in the mail. And when she got that, she did come to Freddie and ask him what's going on. She said she got the notice. It's an in-law. So Freddie did explain, yes, we're doing this for my mother because my mother's been staying with us for the last couple of months since my father passed, for emotional support as well as a plethora of other things. So she had no problem with it at that time, not until Joe came out to our house to kind of like look at the site, the proposed in-law. And she came onto our property without our permission. That's not the first time that she has done that and actually spoke with Joe and my husband during that time. The incident that she's speaking of when I called the sheriff was she thought that I left my home. So I seen her coming across onto my property without my permission. So when I came through the window, I asked her what she was doing on my property because she had a yardstick and she was coming around to the other side near our R G and E. So I peeped out the window and asked her, what was she doing on my property without my permission? She told me she did not know that I was home and that's why she was on my property. So she asked me questions about the addition. At that time, I had my daughter in the house, which is three years old. I was feeding her lunch. And she started going back and forth with me. I told her Freddie had already spoken with her about the addition at the time that Joe was there. He had told her all the information that she needed would be presented by our architect at this meeting and that she had received the notice and that's the end of that. So she proceeded to go back and forth with me about how I needed to get her permission to go before this board to ask the town of Penfield for the variance. So that's when I asked her to politely leave. I said, "You're making me feel uncomfortable right now." She would not leave until after we started going back and forth. Then she left. And then that's when I called the sheriff to politely remind her about trespassing on other people's property without their permission if they're home or not. So with all that being said, the reason why we're putting up the addition, yes, my mother is young right now. I am a nurse. I work for home care. So I see young people going to assisted living, selling their house. I've worked in long-term care. I've been a nurse for almost 13 years. So I see all sides of it. So I foresee this as caring for my father for the last six months as he had cancer, stage four cancer, as more of like a roadblock to say that when my mom got sick, if she ever were to get sick in the future, that she would be in our home for us to care for. Not getting to the logistics of selling her house for the last 34 years that her and my dad have lived in. It was a very big stress on me and my husband, helping her move, helping her get out of that house. So we just did not want to explore that option again in two years, three years, four years down the road when she gets sick and then I end up having to care for her. So the in-law is the best way. We have explored the option of just giving her a comfortable space. We've done the mudroom in our garage to kind of connect and give the shared space without intruding with, you know, doing the shared space town, you know, whatever. So that's about it. I mean, I don't, answering those questions, that's really all I have to say. So if we didn't need the variance, we wouldn't even be before here. We would just have built the in-law. She probably would have found out about it as it was going up.
I think Maria has a question.
Okay.
I'm not sure I heard why you elected to put it on that side versus the other side. Was it a financial consideration?
More of a financial consideration.
Can you talk about that a little bit more?
Yeah, so when, over the winter, I guess you're speaking of the gas leak or whatever that we had, we called our G and E. Our meter was inside underneath our crawl space. So they came out and said, "That's not right. That can't happen. It needs to be moved outside." So obviously, they did that because, for free. So our whole front of the lawn was torn up. They moved the gas lines and put our R G and E outside, our meter outside. So with us exploring the option, when we were speaking with the builder and our different estimates that we got, they said, "When you put it on this side, you have your AC unit here, lines running. You also have your R G and E lines, which lines cannot run underneath the addition. So you would have to call our G and E and it's not going to be free this time. They're going to dig up the lines. They're going to have to move the lines to the outer perimeter of the house, put the meter on the other side, which would be a large expense." Also, to put the, connect the addition is right in our living room. So we would lose the whole window because then the addition would be attached there. So the share, it would really be no shared space. We would come in our living room and then there would be a door to my mom's, you know, apartment. So we actually explored that option. But financially and just the flow of things, the mechanics of things, it just didn't kind of flow well.
Can you ballpark what the expense was? Difference in expense?
Fifteen to thirty. Freddie told you it would be about seven to eleven thousand. That's what he told you.
More.
More for the R G and E.
Okay.
And the AC unit on this side and the landscaping, because we have a Japanese maple tree that would have to move because the addition would be right, it's right in our front yard.
Thank you.
I got one more. She talked about size change. Did you ever get any estimates for anything smaller than what this, or is this what you got the estimates for from the beginning?
From the beginning, we basically gave the people that we got the estimates for, like what we wanted in the, so my mom would have a small kitchenette to maintain her independence, a bedroom for sleeping, basically an open floor plan, dining room, living room combo, and a bathroom. We asked for it to be kind of like a handicap, handicap accessible in case in the future that I have to care for her or hire aid services to come in and do that. It could easily be converted without an extranomical cost. So with that, those things, it kind of fits into the seven, 600 to 700 square feet range.
Okay, so you looked at it at all times-
Right.
-at that size?
Right.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Andres?
No more.
Okay. Anything else from the applicant? Carol, hold on a second. Anything else from the applicant? No? All right. Anybody else in the audience? Carol, you want to come back up?
No, I just want to say-
Well, it's either yes or no. Come on back up. Come on, you know the drill.
You know the rules.
No objection when I found out about the in-law apartment. And I did not have an objection at the time because I just assumed it was on the other side, which only makes sense when there's all that extra space. And even talking about her lines, they could even go over, there's going to be a separate entrance in between the garage somewhere and the going, from the garage into the in-law apartment. So that could be even in that area and there could still be access to the lines that they're talking about. He never did give me a figure on anything, so I didn't know anything about that. But as I say, I don't know that that would even make a difference from where their lines are now. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you all very much. That is the last public hearing, so we will adjourn the hearings, take a brief recess, and reconvene in the back of the room, probably in about five minutes. Thank you. To reconvene, so let's begin with application number one.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Approve the seeker process?
That's what I meant to say.
Yep.
The seeker, which is-
Type two.
Type two, yep.
So no further action required? So we have a motion to declare this a type-two action pursuant to seeker. And did we get a second? That's by Joe?
Second.
Andres second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve this. I'll go through the different categories. Whether an undesirable change is produced in a character in a neighborhood, I don't believe so. The benefit can be sought by some other method. I would say yes, but this is the best place for them. Whether requested variance is substantial, not really. Whether to propose their events or have an adverse effect, the physical environmental conditions in a neighborhood, I'd say no. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, yes. Still, I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, so Joe has made a motion to approve and Maria's second of that motion for the reasons stated by Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number two.
Number two. Let's see, this is a type-two action under seeker, so there's no further review?
I will second that motion. Any further discussion on seeker? All right, all those in favor?
Aye. I'm going to make a motion to approve the variance as requested. If I look at the different aspects, in terms of the character of the neighborhood, the architect stated that, you know, this design was within character of what the home was. It blended in very nicely, same siding, same roof, same appearance for that. The benefit could potentially be achieved other ways. They did explore those and they found that this location was the best one for the garage aspect, for making the garage bigger. You wouldn't, it was easier to do that. Widening the driveway was easier to do from that side. In terms of the floor plan, they were limited to the requirements that the design had for what they need to fit inside for an in-law suite, for the future handicap proofing ability in terms of wider passageways, a handicap ramp coming out into the garage. And then also, from the aspect of the utilities that were out back already for the pool, there's a concrete patio that's all below grade. So to move, you know, the plumbing, electric and things like that that would require, were also a whole nother burden on top of that, that kept the applicant from moving the proposed addition a little closer to the center of the yard than as close as it was from the edge. So that aspect was, it is self-created, but at the same time, with the shape of the lot line tapering towards the back and working for where the house was, the considerations that they took into the design seemed to outweigh the fact that it was self-created to be able to meet the requirements of the addition.
So you're going to give them a foot all the way up from the back of the garage or from the front of the garage?
I think that's the way the variance is, but the applicant has stated that they will not be using that space.
No, I just want to make sure.
So the applicant did state that they would be using as that, but basically it's a taper from-
So no more than a foot?
No more than a foot going to the back, correct?
Okay.
The one-foot variance is not substantial. I think everyone agreed, the applicant agreed, the neighbors agreed that it wasn't a large variance. There were no adverse impacts for the environmental considerations in terms of the environment. They spoke of drainage and things like that. And it's going to be the same as the existing homes. There won't be any real changes to that. And I think I hit them off.
I think I'd like to just make a note that if they actually moved it in one foot, they were allowed to build it right there, right? So that wouldn't change the site view
The site view, which was a concern, yeah.
So the one-foot variance is almost irrelevant.
Correct.
And I would add too, as we know, we asked Andy about the requirements of the in-law and the applicants have met all of those. Maybe not everybody would agree with the decision to build this, but it is their right to build it on their property. When you need a variance, you have a right to come in and request the variance. So, and neighbors have the right to come in and voice their opinion about the request for the variance. That's the way that the system is designed to work and is working. Now, I would say, on the factors here, the other alternatives by law are supposed to be feasible. One of the things that we have traditionally, historically considered on feasibility of alternatives is financial cost. And I think there's significant evidence in the record that putting this structure on the other side would result in a heck of a lot more cost for the project than putting it here. So I certainly think that factor weighs in favor of granting the application as well. Don't know if there are other in-laws in the apartment. In-law apartments in the area, but they're clearly permitted. So I look at that as though the town board, the board that creates the laws, has made a finding that in-laws are appropriate in residential neighborhoods. Even, somebody's got to be the first one, I suppose. And if they're permitted, then as I said, they're permitted. So I don't know if anybody has any other comments on that?
Who wants to second?
I can second.
Marie? Okay, so we have Andres' motion to approve and Marie's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay.
Number three.
Sorry. I'm going to move this as a type-two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review or action.
Second.
All right. Marie, motion to declare type-two action. Joe, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to approve this variance, the request of a variance. Going through the five criteria, I don't believe an undesirable change will be produced. In fact, I think it would actually enhance the property to have that patio in the back. I think it would be a very nice addition. Also, there is no, it won't jut out, so it won't be visible from the front. It will be contained in the back. The applicant has tried to find some other method, but this is really, makes the most sense and he has no access to his backyard right now. And I think he should have access. I think that's a reasonable, reasonable request. The variance is somewhat substantial, but again, given the fact that this is a regularly shaped lot, it's a rectangular lot versus more of a going towards the back.
And the house is built way in the back.
And the house is built towards the back. Everything is, I think, going to need a variance. It's 30 feet, the back of the house is 30 feet from the property line. So I just don't see how you could get around doing this something without a variance. I don't think it will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions at all. I know that a resident has spoken about noise and things, but recall that the house right now has an upper porch, so they can be outside anyway. I just don't think that that would, that the patio would affect any of the concerns. And it sounds like the neighbor's very cognizant of the fact that the dogs make noise and trying to deal with that. And-
Well, I do think, on that point, I do think the existence of a patio increases the possibility that there will be more noise.
Okay.
I'm just pointing that out.
I think whether it's on the porch or low.
You're going to use the patio and you're going to invite people over to be on the patio.
But they could be using the porch too.
Yeah.
That's right.
We invite people all the time. Nobody shows up.
I can understand.
I think screening also, the fact that they're going to be screening that lower section, so it won't really show as a structure.
Now, in terms of buffering, and I understood the neighbor to the back was, you know, concerned about placing natural buffers, that is a significant financial hardship to remove a tree and to plant. So I'm not sure I would want to put that, yeah, I don't think I can, would want to just add that in. And I'm not sure that it was entirely self-created, honestly, given the way this house is positioned.
Yeah, they bought the house. Everything's self-created. Everything's self-created.
I say that with shads.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody seconded it, but I'll second, I'll second it.
So Marie's made a motion to approve for the reasons she's so eloquently stated. Joe has seconded. Any further discussion?
Wow.
Don't hurt yourself, pat yourself on your back.
I know.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Did I miss anything, though? I don't think so, I think I covered it.
Again, as we said, number four has been put off till next month at the request of the applicant. And I think we took care of all the other business on the agenda earlier. Given that, we will stand adjourned and see you next month. Thank you.